Monday, September 21st. On the 7th, please join me in excitement. Let's leave just to the fire. United States of America, which stands one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's follow our first. Councilperson Peterson incurred an injury before the weekend fall. She's a little bit immobile, but she is going to try to join us for the full session at the agenda. So she'll be temporarily excused and then no, no, when she enters the DA, she does so. Clerk, please follow along.
Becken.
Yes.
Dean.
Here.
Leo.
Yeah.
Lewis.
Here.
Truster.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Next, the item is approval of our council minutes from our 15th meeting. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
Some room.
You got a motion by Louis seconded by Truster to approve the motion for a motion to approve minutes. Any questions, corrections, comments?
I heard on a sudden Wiki and he was, I suggested that he comment in the comments about probably likes on water street, but it's listed as Simonson Drive. I think it's supposed to be Severn S E V R Y N. Last name Wiki, capital N, W I C K I.
Then I just made, I shared the correction with clerk.
Any other questions or corrections? There's none. All of the favor of the minister with the correction today.
Yes.
The post not opposed, so carry.
Next order of business is approval of the table registered presented. Have a motion to approve bill, payment bills.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to approve here the cost payable. A total of $1,698,696.90. At this point, we're two million, which are fast watch.
Okay, a motion by Truster seconded by Dean. We approve the payment as presented. Any questions or comments, counsel? If not, all of the favors of the motions are yes.
Yes.
Oh, none of those? So carry. We will be taking all action on our text register. And here's the evening, this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City manager's report is on page nine of your agenda packet. Happy to address any questions that you have this evening.
Mr. Mayor, Ryan, as far as the clerk position, I know we had a great deal of Freedom of Information Act work that needed to be done. Who will be doing that work now that Padley is gone?
So the clerk work is going to be shared duty between Cindy and Kate. And so one of the agenda items this evening is to appoint Cindy as the clerk, interim clerk. And then once that happens, Cindy has the awesome power to appoint Kate as the deputy clerk. So we're going to share that duty. And we also have our attorneys that have been helping out quite a bit of FOIA requests. So we're going to rely on them as well.
I know there was a cost difference, so I didn't know what the cost difference would be and if we needed to be aware of that.
Always aware.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, any other questions for the city manager?
Well, just to follow up on that, so if we assign the attorney to do some of that work on behalf of, why is that? Why is that available to the applicant?
Depends on the FOIA requests. So it always typically, and as a standard, it is available. It just depends on how intense the FOIA request is. If it's a one-off, couple of documents get sent out, we can do that without costs. But if it's part of something more involved, then we're going to rely on our billables, standard cost.
And then, Mr. Mayor, just one more remark as far as the city manager's comments. He talked about radar, oh no, what was it? The traffic study. I know there was some equipment that was put at Lake Street and Blue Star. It seemed like it was only there for about a week and it was past prime season. Are they using that data?
So you're talking?
The traffic study that they're doing, they said they, you have.
The county's traffic study.
Yes, the county's traffic study.
And the question is?
The question is, were they using the data that they collected for perhaps a week's time? There was equipment that was put at the steps times Lake Street and Blue Star.
Got it, got it.
Are they using that information for their study?
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, we've done. But agenda changes. Change to the guest speaker. County Sheriff's Department will not be presenting this evening. However, very closely will be the Jersey Council, the Jersey State. Any other changes that you have?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right. So move on to all the cabinet portion, committee. This is the opportunity for public to address counsel. We request a address counsel on only agenda items at this time. We ask that you, ask, you recognize, limit your hours to three minutes, identify yourself by name and community of residence. The floor is open to cabinet side of public. If none, we'll vote.
Are you kidding? How this after your close session?
We will, people want to, when we go back in close session and if the president at the time, yes, we will. However, I was just going to say that maybe we can extend, since we have a small audience, maybe we can extend the half. Where the audience, the council, and then I, that was someone asked us, wait, because it could be a lengthy full session meeting. If, if, so I would, if, so if we're not to that extent, then.
Put the wrong thing.
On any item you want.
Other one coming from the class session, but.
Yeah, you have to sign nine little forty, you have to see, I said enough to everybody in the rest of September 15th. And did not hear from anybody, so I'll read it. I'm going to begin by addressing two tards adjacent to the Mayville and Calamine Hall. This is a twofly, I never moved into such disarray. Half of the grass is dead, the remaining four senses in the mixture of crabgrass and cloverweed. None of the original flower beds surrounding the park three six feet high are simply muddled. The rear edge of the children's park is part of those rotters in the middle of the hall. I need to require acquiring.
Crewing.
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 This is getting insufficient. And then a sign was standing each over at the public restrooms. Apart from the parks maintained by public works, the vineyards are this downwind area. There's a, a memorial and really set up in the city center. The garden is located by Black Rocky and the yard in her railway line of areas. A trust was established by the city to maintain the garden with lots left after the purchase of the land. I am achieving to admit that I have helped the original Rose Garden Committee. There is little doubt, Roxy would be reduced to tears if she saw a little character as a type that would inhibit her generous gift. While the city initially did good job of the present oversight, because of the site, it's a bit, the holly, the holly and so are so are many of any of the headings prior to that group of places. The holly is a pilot, which resulted in rain holes. Burns were now to now have been dredged late and so not been removed. The roses lack pruning and not flowered out. Additionally, there is a number. Well, the roses like totally, you guys, not flowered out. Additionally, there are a number of bricks in the rear walkway totally, not, not earlier, the zebby cameras. We had to be served. I'm serving the warehouse, we all experience a problem, we have to suffer. Back remains, back on the spectrum, we have spent, we have, I have rented the guest shirts after. Now the city, while the city goes in, so it's like trail. The city center, this part of center, all parks are, I was like, like, well, y'all get the comment, I, I, I and that's the first we have, we have all these days, now sing coal, sing coal, the park near the back, I, I, I and later, there are, we are fixing the lost office in the brown yard around. But I'm, but I'm a bit surprised, surprised that someone encountered, I said, I said, colorful pictures. And you found a beautiful job of my life, all the way to my, 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 and we can cross in July. They are very sick, we're not having a lot, having a lot of this at us. But they look much better than in the past year. You're doing it over mud holes. And the rose yard, I, I, I think should be addressed, supposedly we hired a landscape house to do it. On the, on the, we didn't make this is it. I had a partner from Northwestern University last Saturday and thought establish with it. And he came down, down here and he said, it's dark, it's dark, it's so long. So I put in your budget. And I have a problem, it makes me, it makes me angry, I lose my, actually, what, what, five hundred thousand dollars. Yeah, yeah, to the city. I mean, the purpose is, it means don't leave anything to the city. Because that's what you have, you know, it's embarrassed. So I asked you, you should come up and take the month off, all your, all your comments. Thank you.
I think that's a lot of concern, but we see a lot of things going on. It's going to be a lot, it's going to be a winter full of discussion about, I think, our parks in general. In our green state, in our areas between sidewalks and the roads, and the riots, and discussions with me about, about those topics. Thank you, Seth. Definitely, pounds. Anybody else show your stuff at this time? If none, we will comment, phone time, closing meeting, moving on to guest speakers this evening by the entire district. And I assume that's your role this evening.
This is the oral district meeting on 20th of September. We review the various financials, and the payments total down to $957,500. The district's revenue, $24,000 and change. Expect to grow for the year, less than one percent of that has been received. So we're pretty, pretty, I'm missing ourselves. Sixty of the total budgetary expense, total expense, total expense has been, has been recorded. Chief Janet gave a standard report which included all of this. Our department now is held as a target August, which I think should have been sent to me previously. All those are up, just topped up, also 13% are secure. So some of your, or video incidents are up. And the district is now going to use a new track data to track impaired driving incidents. And they will see the O H incidents, which now will contribute to your account of the past. That includes both. Whatever's supposed to help. I know our decision, which I mentioned before, in the current year. I reviewed the grants and cost recovery data so far. I noticed we receive, pressure received for the thirty thousand dollar FEMA grant received for exercise. So the funding of the department's personal physicals and COVID vaccination funding. For senior bathroom. Grants so far in the district in term year are seventy eight, sorry, seventy three thousand dollars. And over the past four years, the total grants have moved to three hundred. Over three hundred. And today, the issue that the cost recovery, which is where the consumers of the services of the area district who have been, for example, in accident where someone's an impaired driver, situation, that they didn't build. It's not, so they didn't build, which puts a company exposed in this district, which is $6,000 from ours to perspective. Chief also reported that Phil Dalton moved a first responder and had an extended, he has several years. Has come back after having completed an extensive online emergency course at his own expense. And been re-certified now as a member of the district. Chief also noted that Leo Seton, so I think I mentioned last one. Is being finalized in the matter of the housing development township. The agreement involves being involved in our requirements that are somewhat different with them. I have seen the fire. Name's Alex, it's, it's, in any case. With the township, the district is working on a different invitation, reason for the fire district, especially it is in that area which is all in my ability, would be district, fire district. I don't relate to fire systems or sufficient water ahead. We would have a fire district, we'd have a, still, across. He discussed and more discussed for a bit, Blue Star Highway, Old Alleghen Crash Corner intersection. Our meeting was right at the heels of the latest two accident report. And, and also on the heels of the, I mean, this whole sending letter I think, which has received my response to the county commissioners from the road commission. There's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of, I've seen people related to that. And, and I just, fire district. He discussed, we discussed, more discussed, and I assume like a gardening region, which has been mentioned here before. The I F F union, after it was reviewed by the district's legal council. We also discussed and approved provision of the road health savings plan, essentially providing for these three stair step increases based on longevity, avoid allowing that, allows employees to contribute. Based on tenure, based on user service increase in those sort of health saving and transfer. We discussed in recent, department. Kind of discussed recently, mission, risk management association. Renewal insurance, which is the group that ensures that apartments, equipment and, and life insurance as well. The renewal was supposed to take a basis in July, but they had, they had. Drone arranged to the worst with a requirement that this is for major repairable, so large trucks earlier. They threw up no rentals that after sixteen years, rather than the re-und value for the equipment. They would, in the event of a roll over, they would fund the half of that. The chief and Chris Maddison found themselves to push back on that. Maybe having arguments that unlike major cities, or whatever, where departments are doing the important, or access calls a clear half. And maintenance years, superior to what would be in the business department. And then the, the, the storage management group reinstated in the current year at least the 100% agreement. The fact is that the, obviously, the tanker tank or truck, what are they called, tanker trucks. They have purchased 300, had purchased 150, a lot of these things. The agreed on replacement cost, which we pay more insurance to get out of this, it sounded like a machine. The agreed on value for those cars, $600,000, because that is what costs in there is actual costs of replacing that. Maybe it's the area, that, that place, because of a million dollars, so it is a big number. Anyway, that insurance, regardless, roughly, we have refunds, we can, roughly, create a thousand dollars. On staff, chief noted that two one-time personnel, we, they, they have a position. And the first honor are no longer taking daytime calls. And then the two more firefighters had retired. So that, that, that also basically, for people who are close to the day. For all of the, the staff, and then with, maybe for solving, reacting to that. We received, the district received, and it was, there is, the man said, that was, that was, that was. And we, there are some factors of district supplies, because of the bus. And, and the decision, personally started, we will help, we will help people with services, Bob, Megan, and Tyler. During the fall county, rare fall county, premier meeting, the union representative, county Sean Hattie. Spoke noting that the fair, fair speaker, speaker, and Ted was back too, and had no rights, that was all. Four minutes, it will basically already, it's a place.
Counsel, any questions? Okay, thank you. We know that, 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 by, by. Counselperson Peterson. Greg Munson.
Hello, counsel. My name is Greg Munson. And I'm a resident of the city of our resident, I'm a, that's, that's, that's a few other things.